Welcome, everyone. I hereby call the December thirteenth meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education to order. And the Spanish interpretation is simultaneous on those viewing online. So for those viewing online, if you want Spanish interpretation, you can opt for it. And I believe on the replays, they can opt for Spanish as well. And before we do the pledge, I would like, because more than half the board is new, I'd like to start over here with Vida and have each of you introduce yourself.
Vida Maria Alvarez Flores, I represent Area Seven. I'm a retired educator and glad to be here.
Welcome, Louise.
I was ready for so much today. My name is Sarian Reed. I'm representing Lompoc. I just came off the Lompoc School Board and I'm very excited to be here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nadra Erman and I represent Trustee Area Two, which is mainly the Galita area and really happy to be here with everyone today.
I'm Mary Beth Cardy. I represent Trustee Area One, Carpinteria, Summerlin, Montecito, and a little bit of Santa Barbara.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Katia Armistead. My pronouns are she and her, and I represent the Santa Barbara Downtown area, Area Six.
Good afternoon. My name is Guy Walker, representing Trustee Area Four, which is the Long Earth. Thank you.
All right. And with that, if the board would all like to stand and lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll do this all together. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Anna, would you like to do the roll call?
Okay, Mrs. Alvarez Flores?
Here.
Dr. Armistead?
Here.
Mrs. Cardy?
Here.
Ms. Erman?
Here.
Mrs. Frost?
Present.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
And Mr. Walker?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
On number five, changes to the agenda, we do have a change. Item number twenty-five has been pulled. So we will not have to discuss item number twenty-five, which was part of the closed session. And now, are there any public comments today? Anna, Susan, nobody signed in? Okay, then we'll move right on to organizational items. Number seven is the appointment in lieu of election pursuant to the election office. The following qualified person has been appointed in lieu of election, and that would be Trustee Area Seven, Vida Maria. And now, for the rest of our trustees, well, including Vida, Miss Susan, would you like to take it from here?
I would. Well, good afternoon to the board and to the members of the public and people who are related to the board members I see in the public. Welcome to you and our very esteemed District Attorney, John Savernock, as well. I wanted to make sure that the board knew who is up here next to me as well. So on my right is Anna Friedland, the most important person ever, right? Executive Assistant in my office and she's tremendous and somebody who I think has already reached out to each and every one of you. So Anna Friedland. And then to my left, Austin Payne, who is the board and the superintendent's legal counsel. So anytime there's some questions around any formalities or questions that you'd like to have us research or have Austin research, we have counsel here for almost every meeting. So this is Austin. Yeah, thank you. And now for the agenda item, I just wanted to say what a special, important, wonderful day this is. It's a day truly for Santa Barbara County Board of Education history. It really is. With tremendous seven individuals serving countywide, the students. Today really marks a day of public service. Also allows us to mark an opportunity to just share our respect for each of you, for all the values that you bring and value that you bring to the board and the incredible range of diversity that you each are bringing forward. It is tremendous, your experiences, your thoughts, your ideas, your aspirations. It truly is a day that will go down in history. So thank you for serving on behalf of all the children and students and educators in Santa Barbara County. To install five board members today, John Savernock, our District Attorney, is here today. He's going to approach the podium. John, talk about public service and servant. That is who he is. Truly serves countywide. We get a chance to talk education and law here and there. And thank you so much for saying yes to the invitation and for being here today. It's a very, very special day.
Actually, Dr. Salsito, I wanted to take another opportunity to thank you. When Susan called me, I couldn't say yes fast enough. I have been in public service for essentially my entire career for coming up on thirty-three years. And it's been in the public safety arena. And while the Constitution of the State of California does describe the provision of public safety as the primary purpose of state and local government, the most, the most important, the most vital gift that government provides the citizens is a public education. Your efforts to provide a quality, safe, inclusive educational experience is so important to the community. Because schools build community. Kids in school don't end up as consumers of criminal justice services. Kids that stay in school have options to do whatever they want. Kids that are in school become a member of members of the community and they are our future leaders, our future neighbors. And so I can't thank all of you enough for devoting your time, which that that commitment will be considerable, as I'm guessing you've already figured out. Your energy, your skill, and your devotion to Santa Barbara County. So as a fellow public servant, thank you. Now, for everybody taking the oath, what I would like to, I'll do it as a group, but when I get to the "I state your name", if we could start on stage left, is that stage left or stage right? Stage right. So if we could start on stage right and individually just state your name, just so. Otherwise, when they do the group, state your name, it just turns into a big jumble. So would everybody being sworn in, please stand? Okay. So please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I will.
Katia Armistead, Nadra Erman.
Sarian Reed.
Vida Maria Alvarez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you all so very much.
Okay, we will, yep, I'm on. We will now review the board committee assignments, and there was a handout in the board materials. I don't know if it's necessary for me to go through and read it. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at it. And, yes. This isn't a democracy. Yes, you were assigned them. Yes, it's just happening. Okay. Then if there are no questions or discussions about that, we will move on to the committee. Here we've got our committee, and now we're changing the name of the first committee, which is the Organizational and Development Committee. And we'd like to change that to the Board Organization and Governance Committee. And I would entertain a motion, and then we will have any discussion? Do I have a second? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll...
I'm assuming there is no development?
Not in the sense that we use the word development.
And that's one of the reasons why we changed it, because it was misleading. It's after the swearing in and getting used to the process.
Introduce the orange sign, please. Oh, we're just waiting today. Yes.
There you go. Thank you. What I was just saying is that, as we were saying, it's the development means something has a different connotation, and so it was getting a little confusing. And a lot of the activities that the committee were involved in really centered more around governance, and so that's why we named the motion or recommendation.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we now have an organizational and governance committee. And now I'd like to ask, oh, just state that number eleven, that the role of the superintendent in regards to the County Board of Education, the County Superintendent of Schools serves as our ex officio secretary and executive officer of the board. And that would be Mrs. Salsito. And number twelve, there was also attachment with proposed meeting dates in our packet. We say we have a regular meeting date of the second Thursday. There are a few exceptions. We have in June, there are two meetings, please note that, and that's because of the budget deadlines. And then in December, we have a Friday meeting because of the announcement, or what do they call it? Verification by the county of the election information, and we can't meet to swear everyone in until that has happened. So that one is also moved to a different date. And we have one of the meetings in Santa Maria is dual location. And that means here or in Santa Maria. It's not a Zoom or a webinar. It's either here or there. And one is at ten o'clock, and then there's a four o'clock meeting in July and a four o'clock meeting in August that is also a dual location. It's both boardrooms. Yes, you can either be here or you can be there.
So it's in person?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, or a bus.
Yeah, because there is a facility in Santa Maria.
And then the Thursday, let me think. Okay, I just want to make sure that you note that there are some differences in some of the dates and some of the times. All right, are there any questions about that?
I don't have a question, but I just, it's always nice to have that a little. It's always nice to have a little bit of the context for the meetings, if that's so. So just wanted to provide that for the new members.
Absolutely.
And in 2024, we started with meetings on the second Thursday. We originally were doing on the first Thursday, but it it made more sense in terms of preparation for the board meeting. So that's, that started as a new process last year. During the course of last year, we also talked more about having board meetings, both locations. So that's why we've updated to have more board meetings in Santa Maria and Santa Barbara, and then also experimenting with the idea of having dual locations. And part of the reason why we are doing that, as you can see, a couple of the meetings are at four PM, because we also had discussions about making this meeting open to a larger community members. And sometimes the two PM, it was hard for people who were working during those hours to attend or to even be able to listen or to comment and engage. And at the same time, there were some cons to that because of the preparation. And with the county board, we all come from different parts of the county. Obviously, instead of with smaller districts, they're all really localized, so no one really has to travel that far. And so we are going to experiment with having them on one of the dual locations at four PM to see, to work out the logistics, because there's a lot more logistics involved and being able to do meetings in dual locations and later, and to see if that's something that is feasible logistically, if it works for board members, and then to be able to gauge any kind of uptick in community engagement. So I just, that was the larger picture of like what this schedule, why the schedule is the way it is and the thought process that went into it.
On that, I will ask for a motion to approve these proposed schedule of meetings. We'll move. Second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Nadra. That was excellent. Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have our schedule for meetings. And now, I believe we have lucky number thirteen, which is the Board Organizational and Governance Committee is going to give a short report, and the board will then elect the new president and new vice president. And Nadra was the chair, yes, of the Board Organization?
Spokesperson.
Is today's spokesperson. Okay.
So again, this was one of the board and organization, board organization, and now Governance Committee chores, our responsibilities is every, at the end of every year, we look at the board composition and nominate, recommend a president and vice president for the following year. The way that we did that, and as you can, you can kind of tell, I like to be very thorough with explanations, but just so that we are all on the same page. We went through a list of past presidents and vice presidents of the board to be able to really understand where we would think would be the best recommendation for the, for 2025. Looking at our board makeup and that we have five new sworn in, we have three new brand new board members. We, and Judy has voluntarily served as the chair for two years now. We wanted to recommend and nominate Mary Beth Cardy for the president's and chair role of the board and for myself as vice chair because of the amount of time that I've been on the board, et cetera. So that is the thought process behind it, and yeah, that's pretty important.
May I hear a motion? And a second?
A second.
And discussion. I would like to comment that next to Mary Beth and myself, Nadra is the longest-serving. And Vida Maria is next with only, not even a year.
No, not even a year.
So this is great. Lots of energy and enthusiasm. All right, any further comments, discussion?
I appreciate you putting it together so clearly for it to make sense, and I think it's going to be great.
Makes sense.
Thank you. I will then call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
That was loud, Judith.
It is done. That was a happy laugh.
Thank you, Judy.
Yours.
Thank you, Judy, for all your...
Thank you. Thank you so much. I respectfully accept. And it will be very difficult to fill the shoes of this diligent trooper who did an extended tour of duty and got us through quite a few issues, and she met the moment with equanimity and always great optimism and humor. And that, and that notwithstanding the doggy disasters that were part of so many meetings. So thank you, Judy, and I just want to acknowledge that you have been really just so thorough and caring, and your, your understanding of North County has been really edifying and illuminating for me. And I, you felt so secure in, in your leadership, and thank you again for serving. Would you like an opportunity to speak?
Ah, now the pressure's off. I can't say enough about the staff here at the county offices, all of you. You have just been so positive, optimistic, constructive, always, you know, working for the best outcome for the children that are under our responsibility and for education, which is nothing is more important than educating our children and that we have and sustain this public education model in the best manner that we possibly can. I, to be a part of that is tremendous, but to be able to chair is an honor and a privilege. And I thank you. I'm, I just am regretful that it was under such unfortunate circumstances with the passing of one of our previous board members who we all miss greatly. And we will march on. So thank you very much. And I, I am just so thrilled to be a member still, for two more years at least, of this board and see all the energy and excitement and just interest in moving forward. It's just wonderful. Thank you very much.
And likewise, it is a joy and really an honor to be able to serve with all of you. And I can feel the fresh air in the room already, and I really look forward to our, our time together. The next item on the agenda is to review the board representative. One of the functions of this board is that we appoint a representative to the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association to their executive committee. They meet first Thursday of the month by Zoom, usually in the morning. And all board members are invited to attend these meetings. We'll be, you'll be given the information in your email, SBCEO email. But as far as our representation, Judy has served in this role, and I would invite you to consider continuing in that respect.
It would be my pleasure to do so.
Excellent.
Excellent.
She can come back to us with the latest and greatest on SBCSBA, it's called. Know your acronyms. All right. Our next item is the superintendent's report. Susan?
Thank you so much. So the superintendent's report is a standing item that I'll submit to the board in your agenda for you to peruse. And I, I will always ask to see if there are any questions or comments from the board in any areas. I invite you to send those questions in advance or just ask them here at the board, board meeting. And the format has been where, in, in your books, I start with just enrollment. Sometimes it's really nice to see, well, what, what are the programs that we're operating and how many students are enrolled? So you can see here that what we try to do is just keep a running tab month to month and, and then we'll do a comparison year. So November, we selected that month because it was last month. We'll have a comparison of twenty-three and twenty-four, just so you can see. But as you look down, you'll see the juvenile court and community schools that we operate, Fitzgerald and Dos Puertas, those attendance numbers, and then early care and education, which we operate preschools, and then our special education services. So those are our direct service numbers there. So we'll always begin there. And then I think the, each of the board members had an opportunity to meet the Associate Superintendents of the divisions here today. We have Kirsten Escobedo, who's the Associate Superintendent for Special Education, Mari Gonzalez, Human Resources, Ellen Barker for Curriculum and Instruction, Stephen Torres for Administrative Services. Not present today is Bridget Boblitz for Student and Community Services. But we take the major divisions and provide you with some updates. It's really hard to contain this in less than ten pages, but try to give you some highlights of, of the work that we're doing to serve and support the students and the schools throughout Santa Barbara County. So if ever you have a question, please let me know. Sometimes I'll call out something, just even off, off of this record. But for today, I thought I would just give you an orientation of what I typically provide and wanted to see if there are any questions or comments from the board at this time. All right. Well, then I'll pass it back to Chair Cardy.
Thank you. It's really, really helpful to have this report so clearly defined. And as always, if there are any questions, Susan's available to provide further context. So in terms of our consent agenda, we're going to actually pull item number sixteen minutes, and we'll, we'll act on those after we review and sort of frame the other items that are regularly featured on the consent agenda. And those involve the registration of credentials and certification documents and the issuance of temporary county certificates. Those are the docs that are registered in the SB CEO office from October seventh to November sixth of this year, and then the temporary county certificates for that time period. So that's a for your information item. We also regularly feature the Declaration of Surplus. And that's in two areas, two departments, rather, Communications and Early Care and Education. We've got the rules and regulations governing the purchase of school supplies and equipment. Again, this is just a for your information item. And are there any questions on any of those regular features? If not, I'd call for a motion to approve?
I, I move that we approve items seventeen through nineteen.
My second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll hear a motion for passing the minutes from the meeting held on November fourth of this year.
Myself.
We have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And our new, our new board members?
Yeah.
Do not need to vote on that one. It's not, it's not illegal to do so, but you can abstain. So that you could all vote on the consent agenda. Yeah. So we just took the minutes out for that reason only. So they'll be in there next time. Okay? Great. Then on item number twenty, there's a personnel report, and then there was an... Then on item number twenty, there's a personnel report and then there was an addendum to that. And that is an information item. And now we get to the board orientation binder and revised board webpage. That's our first action item number twenty-one. So what we're looking for here is just a conceptual approval of what's been done. And we're going to hear from Nadra, who will report on the work that's been done. This is a new effort. It's a work in progress. And really encourage you to check out our webpage and to dive into this binder. There's a lot of really good information and it's been curated, easy to read, it's very accessible. And it pretty much answers every question you may ever have, but I'll let Nadra fill us in on the rest.
Okay, well, thanks. Thank you. And Judy and Vida Marie, please feel free to jump in. And so for the board organization and now governance committee. One of our responsibilities that we were tasked with was really making sure that. We made our board information readily available for all incoming board members. And then also existing board members as a resource that we could go to. To really understand our roles and responsibilities and have any extra supportive information easily at hand. So Vida Marie works very diligently with the communications team to really highlight. All of the most important high level information that we felt like all any board member and oncoming board member would need. Even though it seems like a really big binder, it's very, it's very concise with the information. So it's full, but yet it's concise. And in all of the information that it has in terms of the trustee areas, in terms of roles and responsibilities. In terms of the staff directory, the staff framework, in terms of the different departments. So that was done also in conjunction with making sure that this information was easily available on the website. So that community members would be able to access that. And then also to have that level of redundancy for board members to be able to access it both. As a hard copy and online. This was part of an effort that came to the board. To, like I said, ensure that we had the this level of governance in place for the board. And another item that did was it was more of like a three-pronged approach or process. The first being the binder, the second being the website. And the third, we discussed having some sort of board retreat or gathering. As a way to connect and really go over our mission vision and values. As well as set the tone for our particular term, whether that be a year, two years, et cetera. When we had had this discussion initially. The board was going to be changing, as it has now, and here we are. And so we thought that any kind of conversation around any type of retreat or gathering would be better suited for our new. Board, you know, board members. So what I'd like to propose is that, one, if there's any questions or comments insights about the board binder. Or the website that we'd like to make note of moving forward. And two, in terms of the retreat, our gathering. If we have the authority from the board to start parsing through and figuring out what that might look like. Where as a committee, so then we can then come to the board and say, based on, you know, being able to really look at this. These are some of the ideas that we became forward and and have for the board to then decide on. So that is, that's pretty much the information around the binder and the webpage. And then also a potential gathering barn.
So we're hoping that the onboarding, the new information that we all are still striving to understand. And you all are going to be getting into even more is attainable and visible. And in a place we can all look at it. And so coming aboard, as I did, I couldn't find a lot of answers on websites. So coming off of the San Luis Obanita board, we had just finished doing the actual work of a handbook and an onboarding process. And the transparency of of what we're going to be about. We're a team, so we need to kind of come together and start, you know, forming our team and and getting to know each other. So I think that's probably going to be our next piece is organizing some kind of a session so that we can come together and have a retreat or some kind of a. Working together time.
Yeah, there might be some people who don't like the word.
Board member Howell, he was he wasn't too keen on that.
I know.
So we can change it to to fit the tone of our board members.
I'm up with a new one. We'll make up a new word.
Thank you. Well, thank you both and our former colleague Joe Howell for consolidating all this information. It was really a.
And the ladies, who Joe always knew the names too. We have a couple of people out there. Wave at us, please. They did a lot of the actual work, finding the maps, printing, organizing and putting it together. I mean, very well. We appreciate all that support.
That was a big accomplishment. So I'll entertain a motion then to, again, grant conceptual approval to this. And we'll continue to work.
Thank you, sir.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing none.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Let me interject simply for clarification for myself. Thank you so much for the action and moving forward. So what I think what we'd like to do is take the binder materials now. And there'll be some updates, obviously new board members, new committees, new name changes. But with those updates, then what we're wanting to do is continue to keep a binder updated. But then now create something so that it can be located online. So with your approval, that's what we'll be moving towards there. One thing that hasn't been. Done to a hundred percent yet are the trustee area maps. They're they're just not right. We have a consultant group that we're working with. We're working back and forth to make them right. It's just taking some time. So know that when we get those right, those will then be integrated to the webpage. Because of the new webpage that you've approved conceptually, as well as in the materials here and online. So that's taking time. It's just out of our hands right now, but the trustee area maps are something we want to get just right. And then I think what I'm hearing is a need then for the organizational and governance committee to meet sometime in probably January. To support planning some sort of working session, learning session, growing community session for the board. Okay, wanted to make sure I got all of that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for clarifying. Okay, now to the budget. We have the first interim report. It's going to be presented by our board budget committee chair, Judy Frost. And this is part of this approval is is part of the budget monitoring process. So we approved the first interim report as we issued and it was a an attachment. Judy?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The budget committee met on December fourth. And as Madam Chair reported, I served as the chair of the budget committee and I believe I'm continuing in that. I think, yeah. And we have an agenda for those meetings and we have minutes from previous meetings. And then we have the discussion of the first interim report and any other items that need to be considered from a standpoint of our budget. And at this time. On the fourth, our associate superintendent of administrative services, Steve Torres, presented to the budget committee. The information on the first interim and based on that, the committee has voted unanimously. No, it wasn't unanimously, but almost unanimously to move forward with the report and to the board. And ask for your approval and we're. The majority of the committee is recommending approval of that. I would like to call Mr. Torres up to the podium, up to the hop seat. Now. Steve is. Very, very is a wonderful resource when it comes to this budget. It's probably not exactly like anything you've seen before. I don't know if we're going to go into a tutorial today or not, but maybe this should be part of a working session. That we could have a short, because it could take up the whole day, retreat on the. Schedules that we that your department produces and the timeline as to when they have to be submitted and and all of that. So you aren't going to get the whole picture today, but it'll be a start. And we will fill in the blanks as we go along here, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And just to start, well, good afternoon, board members. I will just kind of give a brief timeline of the budget, just so you know where this falls in terms of our context of this first interim. So there's kind of three reporting periods for each budget cycle. So there this is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle. We adopted that budget in June of this past June. And so first interim accounts for our expenditures and revenue changes through October thirty-first. And so we update the budget accordingly. Second interim reporting will take place in March. And that is through expenditures updates through January thirty-first. And then that's officially kind of our budget cycle. We use that budget at that point in time, second interim to plan for our following year budget. And so just in terms of general timeline, that's where we are now. To note on this particular first interim report, we're able to account for changes in property taxes. There's a state report for P one J twenty-nine that we received. So you'll see an increase in revenue in this report and that's accounting for the increase in property taxes. In terms of expenditures, well, let me take a step backwards. Other updates you'll see is we've we've closed the twenty-three, twenty-four budget earlier this fall. And so that kind of gives us our final ending balances for our different funds. So those are updated in this first interim as well. So if we had a surplus at the end of the year, that's accounted for when we close our books, then we plug that number in. And then on the expenditure side, we saw some slight increases that that are planned. And those mainly have to do with. We're we're refilling all of our emergency supplies. So there's a cost that comes with that. We had an emergency in one of our fiscal offices, our now fiscal office. And so there's some repairs and remediation that comes with that. So those are costs that we now know of that we didn't know when we adapted the budget that are plugged in. But other than that, you won't see too many changes in this first interim report. And it is consistent with the budget that that we that we adopted in June. And I'll be happy to take any questions that you have. Yes.
Summary? Detail?
Yes.
That kind of what we're looking at. So if we're trying to follow you.
Okay.
Summary?
Yeah, so there's a page that you received that's the summary report, you give the details, the ending balance, the starting balance, ending balance. Revenue on the long page that you have there. You will see the changes tracked in the total general fund accounting on the right column there. But in terms of what I was providing now, I was just gonna give a bit. Okay, good question. So what you're holding on the in your left hand is our Saks report. So that's the official state report that's generated. And that's very tedious. It has it has not only our current year. Fund accounts, it also has our multi-year projection. And it also includes a bunch of questions and criteria and standards that are assessed based on the numbers that we plug in. So that's like if you want to know every single detail. So we provide that as a resource. The the long form that you held up, that is our summary form of each of our funds. And it'll show changes from adopted to first interim. So that's typically what we rely on for for that overview that's provided to the budget committee and and to you as well.
I'll get it by the end. For line item six thousand, six thousand, the capital outlay. The amount for the adopted and the current and projected budget, they vary pretty substantially. And I was just wondering, was that did that have anything to do with the remediations that are going on? Or and I was just wondering.
Yeah, so the two items you'll see, it's for for the remediation that's taking place, we're seeing the purchase of furniture. So some of that falls in there, some of that falls into the five thousands because there's services being provided for the remediation. And it also accounts for some of the planning for the property in Santa Maria that we've been discussing. So some of those costs we weren't sure of, again, when we adopted, so we've made adjustments for what we know now.
Definitely. Okay, just that's I just wanted to check.
Yeah, no, thank you. Any other question?
It's like no further questions. Thank you, Steve. And this summary is really such a handy tool. It distills a lot of information which we are required to receive. Do what you will. Thanks for that report. Do I hear a motion to approve the first interim report?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy. A second? Thank you, Vida. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And.
We need a remote.
That motion passes. Our next item is a recommended approval of a change order that I'm going to call Mark Cunningham up to describe. And break this down a little bit for us. It's regarding. Capital improvements on the county ed buildings curriculum and instruction division. Construction project. Listen.
For unmuting, may I please introduce Mark Cunningham, who's our director of facilities for SBCEO? And so he is the knowledge base for all of these change orders and big facility issues that are coming forward. And so, Mark, one more time.
It's nice to meet the new board members. Sorry, I should have started that off. Yes. So the the change order request is for three different events. Items one and three are asbestos removal for the existing flooring. The that did not get included in the bid set. It had been intended to. It was missed during the architect's combination of all the different documents. Didn't fall into the bid set, but we knew we had to do it anyways. So first step we did was get all the old carpet, asbestos tile and mastic out of the room. That's the majority of the amount. And the other one, item two, was to do demolition on a Saturday to reduce noise in the building. This was the concrete cutting and breaking of the bathroom. We didn't want that done during the work day due to all the staff in the building. So that was just pushed to a Saturday. And that's that's just the three items.
Are there any questions on this project? You need a little more context on it?
No.
Okay, you just described a little bit more what you're doing.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. I apologize. Sure, sure. I apologize. The.
She could start with what happened.
Yeah.
Sure.
Start with the event.
Sure. Well, so two two different projects, though. The the fiscal is a different project, but we'll just go over CNI is downstairs curriculum instruction. This project was developed and designed over the last four years. It went out to bid about five months ago. We received a couple of competitive bids. We brought it to the board for approval and construction started about four months ago. And this construction includes four new office spaces, renovation. So removal of all the existing finishes, like flooring, some drywall, moving some walls around. Creating four new office spaces, new paint, new finishes, new furniture, electrical outlets and stuff like that. So a much more modern space.
Great, thank you.
Holding smoothly them here.
That's funded from CNI. That's not sure. That's funded from CNI. That's, I'm not sure.
Good question. Great. Any other questions for Mark?
I did have a question, Mark. So for this project, there was some work that once they were removing, it's during demolition, they uncovered an area that required more abatement. Do you foresee that possibly coming up as they continue to do the work? They might enter into a space that might require more abatement that is not known at this time.
Yeah, we've got everything that to this point. The the additional, what you're describing was when the abatement took place, a few walls had to then be relocated at a later time. And when we relocated those walls, we then exposed existing flooring under the walls. The walls had been built on top of that floor. Once I moved them, I had to then clean that space out. That was the additional item that we see. So yes, at this point, all areas are cleaned downstairs. We have 100% sign off and clear clearance on that.
Okay, so there's no foreseen possible change orders?
Not for asbestos.
Not for asbestos.
I have additional coming as the project continues to develop. This one is, I think I've I've reported as like seven and a half percent of the original budget I'm asking for. I will have more next month.
Okay.
I I can give you a quick summary. I have additional outlets for electrical and data that when we walked with the furniture layout, where those desks were going to land, I needed to add more. While I had the walls open, we went ahead and put those in. That will be an additional cost. The flooring was under the flooring was pretty bad. It was the concrete was chunky and chipped up. I will have to smooth that before I put new carpet down. That was not covered on the original plan because it wasn't seen. The bathroom downstairs, I had extra framing and drywall that wasn't covered. The structure of the bathroom wasn't, when we removed a wall, it was supporting the ceiling. I then had to reinforce the ceiling that the wall was holding up. So that's additional framing that I have to cover.
Okay.
I I will, I will have a change order log presented to Steve here in the next week. And then we can review it and I can give you a better update of what's coming.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
I I promise, I know I'm on my on my learning curve. And and I don't really need all the answers for all this stuff. I'll figure out what I need to talk to Susan about or whoever. We don't own this building. So these are leasehold improvement. Is there some sort of benefit that we get out of spending money for somebody else's building?
Yeah, that's a really great question. If I might just start to
I'm happy to take it up.
It's a really great question. And in fact, we probably will take up it up in closed session further. But I will say for curriculum instruction, that's Ellen Barger's division. She's Ellen Barger's team is both on the second floor as well as the first floor and has been growing over time. And the first floor layout, it just just was not conducive to having either, you know, group sessions, individual offices, it just really needed to be improved anyway. And so that and her, the team is very is displaced. They're all over the place right now and have been for the for the five years that we've been under construction. So I think for for the work at at hand right now, the work that they need to do as a team, just building work efficiency, that's it's the kind of improvements that we needed to do all along. Yeah, all along. But we will talk in a little bit about how far we want to go. Yeah.
Mark, is there a projected conclusion to this project? How long? How much longer do you think?
I have their, this this change order does include 22 days of additional calendar time. That pushes them out till February 22. I had them completing in January 30. But due to the abatement, that took a bit of extra time. They are hitting their dates. They are pushing along nicely. I would expect them to be done by the end of January 1st of February. We're ordering furniture shortly, and then that should fall into that timeline as well. They're they're actually, the contractor is doing great as far as time. They're accommodating and they're hitting their marks.
Wonderful. Thank you for shepherding this process. I think change orders are an unfortunate inevitability in any kind of construction project. Anybody who's done a remodel knows this very, very well. So thanks for your guidance on this.
Thank you.
May I get a motion to approve the recommended change order?
I'll move.
Second? Thank you, Vida. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we are going to move into a closed session. So I'd like to excuse our guests and any other staff members that don't need to be here.
I was like, I'm still, I'm still reading it. Take it away. My, that's my thing.